Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Today we have the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. If everyone will please join me in saying the pledge before we get started.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first docket on, our first item on the docket today is PZ-18-003. Oh, excuse me. Let's go through the minutes first. Thank you.
Swearing in.
You want to do the swearing in? Swearing in? All right, we're gonna have all staff sworn in to begin with.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. All right. First up, we're gonna look at the minutes. Everybody receive a copy of the minutes. Go ahead and get a motion on the floor and then we'll discuss any, discuss any changes or edits. We have a motion from Mr. Roberts. Thank you. Douglas.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Wick Williams. All right, discussion, changes, edits. Mr. Finney.
Let's have a couple of questions or maybe some clarifications on page two of six, under item two. The first line there, Attorney David Pike, Pike Legal Group, et cetera, speak on behalf of the new singular wires. Is that not wireless? I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
Proper.
Probably should be wireless.
Yeah, we'll need to check that.
I think that's the name, you know, the proper name. Then, oh, on page four. Kind of start to feel like Miss Bonet down here, but anyway, the number three under binding elements, the, the, should be painted light gray or, or light blue in color. Light gray or blue are our colors. We don't need in color. It's not proper grammar.
Want to strike it? That's fine.
Yeah. That's, I think, all I had. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Then with changes as noted, we'll go with a voice vote. All in favor of the, the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, son.
Mr. Chairman, I need to abstain because I was not present.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Our first docket of the day is for 6323 Highway 329 in Crestwood. Is anyone here representing that docket?
There is not. They sent an email and requested that this to be continued to be tabled till the next meeting.
Very well.
Probably need to take it off the table and discuss and retable, I think.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make-
It stays laid on the table, correct?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table PZ-18-003. Can we table it? It's on the agenda?
I think John's asking whether or not it has to be removed from the table, and it doesn't.
We have a motion from Mr. Douglas. Table. Do I have a second? Counsel, any? Okay. All right. Can we go with a roll call vote on this? Excuse me, a voice vote?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All those in favor of placing docket PZ-18-003 on the table, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, like, son. Motion carries. All right. Ms. Alvey.
Yes. Ethel will read the docket.
Docket PZ-18-004. Application has been filed by BBWD Partners LLC for approval to amend the binding elements attached to the original approval of Summit Park Section 1. The property is located at 2935 Jericho Road, LaGrange. The property is zoned CO1 Conservation and AG1 Agricultural.
Good morning. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Fox stated, this is a request to amend the binding elements for Section 1 of Summit Parks. The property is zoned R2 Residential and CO1 Conservation. Section, the total site is 158.3 acres and Section 1 is 103.4 acres. I don't think that number is correct, but okay. So this is an area, an aerial view of the property. You'll see highlighted or outlined in red, that is Section 1 that we are looking at today about amending the binding elements. This is just an area view of the same. And this is the overview of the zoning layer that shows the portions that are zoned R2 and CO1. On September 26th of 2006, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a preliminary subdivision plan for 192 lots on approximately 158 acres to be known as Jericho Point, which was later renamed Summit Parks. That was docket number PZ-06026. On December 17th of 2017, the Oldham County Planning Commission approved a revised preliminary subdivision plan known as Summit Parks. This was for the remaining portion known as Section 2 for 228 lots, which was docket PZ-18-004. Again, the previous plan was for 192 single-family lots with two entrances off Jericho Road, and the revised plan was approved for 228. In January of 2008, a record plat was recorded for Sections 1A and 1B of Summit Parks, which included 58 lots, 4.6 acres of open space, leaving a balance of 134 lots and 9.0 acres of open space. So this is, again, the record plat and the overlay for Section 1, which was 58 lots. These were the 19 binding elements that were approved in 2006 for Section 1. I will not belabor the point and go through all 19. But basically, when the applicant came forward back in 2017, they amended the binding elements for Section 2, and there was discussion of what needed to remain relevant to Section 1. So they agreed to come back in the future months to address the binding elements for Section 1. Again, these, these are the, when Section 2 was approved, the following binding elements were approved. They are in your staff report. The approval, again, number one says approval of the plan only applies to the plan presented at, should not be the April, yeah, the April 24th. That was a word search change. In 2017, the plan shall be, there shall be no subdivision of any lot greater, into a greater number of lots without review of the Planning Commission. Cumulative phasing plan should limit the number of building permits issued to 40 per year beginning with the first record plat. There shall be no direct access to Jericho Road from lots 1, lots 59 through 70, lot 89, lots 225 through 228, lot 163 as shown on the revised plan dated November 29th of 2017. The preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of approval. And then 6, 7, and 8 were added at the meeting regarding stormwater. Number 6 says the entire stormwater system shall be enclosed within a 15-foot stormwater easement that allows access to said easement. The existing stormwater detention retention basins are not allowed to be taken out of service for new development. If any of them, if any of them are planned to be used in this construction, silt basins separate from the system will be required to be designed into the construction phasing. They shall only be removed after stabilization has taken place and the removal is approved in writing by the county engineer. And number 8, the county engineer shall review the blue line streams and approve, and approve any mitigation required either by the county or the Corps, Corps of Engineers. So the applicant agreed to those eight binding elements at the December 2017 hearing, and again, said that they would agree to return in the coming months to address for Section 1. So basically, the applicant is requesting to amend the original 19 binding elements for Section 1 to those similar of the eight listed here for Section 2. That is all that I have. And the correct date on number 1, again, that was, should be December 19th of 2017 instead of April 24th as shown on the screen. It's correct in your staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Alvey.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Ms. Alvey. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Alvey? All right. We'll move on to the presentation from the applicant. Mr. Baxter.
Good morning. My name's Barry Baxter, 117 West Main Street here in LaGrange. I'm the attorney that represents the applicant. Just for the sake of clarity, yes, there were 19 binding elements. I, I think if you all review those binding elements, you'll see that a number, that, that the ones that we're removing have been already fulfilled. So the purpose here, and we were here in December, when we came in December, we were trying to get the, the, we, we actually asked to do this in December, and there was a notice question that was raised. The county attorney indicated that we probably had an obligation to make sure that we, that there was a notice that specifically indicated that this action was going to be taken. So that's why we're back now. And if you, this will make the Section 1 and Section 2 binding elements the same so that everybody doesn't have to worry about having two different playbooks to deal with when they're looking at things as they relate to this. 6, 7, and 8, we don't have any objection to those. Some of those may have already been somewhat addressed on record plat. So, but we obviously have no intention of taking detention out of service or anything like that. And I, I think if you look at the other binding elements, those have already either been complied with or they're things that staff would tell you are typically dealt with by, by way of deed restriction. So that's why, that's why they're not necessarily included here. I can answer specific questions about the prior binding elements, these binding elements, but essentially, alls we're trying to do is clean this up so that Section 1 and Section 2 have the same requirements and obligations that we need to fulfill as it relates to Planning and Development Services and the ordinances that are in effect for the subdivision regulations. That's all that we have relative to this. It's just a housekeeping matter. So I'm sure you all may have questions, but I'm gonna sit down and shut up at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Is anyone else present who wishes to speak in, in, in support of this application? All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition or has questions about this application? Seeing none, we'll move on. Does anyone on the commission have questions of either the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions.
Please, Ms. Smith.
Um, Mr. Baxter?
Yes, ma'am.
I have questions.
Uh, hang on. If, if any of your team will be testifying, we'll need to get them sworn.
Well, go ahead and get sworn just in case, because Ms. Smith may ask me something I can't answer.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
In the, in the proposed binding, are the binding elements from November, from December of 17 were eight in number. The proposed binding elements today are only seven. So number 1 in December is not in there anymore. You've only got seven today.
Is your mic on?
Yes. I'm usually so loud. I'm trying to keep it down. Then, in the proposed binding elements, in number 4, which was number 5 in December, you took out the word "federal." Must comply with all established federal, state, and, and that's omitted today, and I wondered why. And also, the approved ones in December, in number 4 in December, that's now number 3 today, it omits lot number 163, and I wondered about that.
I'm sorry. Let me catch up.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. I got, I got to your federal question, and then Amy and I started talking, and I-
I'm sorry.
Lot 163. Go, go ahead and, and say that second one again, please.
The second one was in number 4 in December. That's number 3 today. Lot number 163 was omitted today, and I wondered why.
Um, they're in Section 2, aren't they? Well, lot 163-
Is listed.
Is listed.
In the staff report, under number 3.
Okay, missed it. Sorry.
And this is just an omission.
And what about the federal?
It was just an omission.
I think that's just an omission. It can be added in.
And that, can that be corrected?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Thank you.
And number 1 is not listed, Ms. Smith, because they're not, it's not, a plan is not being submitted. So number 1, when Section 2 was approved, that was for the plan that was submitted then, so there's only 7.
So this is just, so I don't have to have that sentence for the ones that are proposed today?
Correct, because they're not submitting a plan.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Is that all? Anyone else? Mr. Douglas.
I really didn't have any questions, but I do have one now, since some things were raised. Mr. Baxter, I understand on Section 1, there's residents already living in Section 1, correct?
Correct.
So was this correction of these, or amended of binding elements been approved by the homeowners living in Section 1? Because I'm assuming these were recorded on deeds, correct?
No. It's not recorded on the deeds.
Okay.
But, but the, and, and so that, that actually goes to the reason why we're back.
Right.
Because when we came in December, there was a concern that there was not notice. So now we have, we've given notice, and that's why we're here today.
And then was there any issues with the homeowners?
Not that I'm aware of.
And has, Mr. Urban, has, they complied with all the existing amendments, or binding elements that were on the original?
For instance, right, right turn lane constructed at the main entrance.
Yes.
The lights, all that stuff. Because basically, we're, that's why we're eliminating those, because like, the turn lane is already constructed. Already completed, right. Thank you. Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Anyone else? All right. Mr. Baxter, any, any rebuttal comment? Okay, thank you. All right.
No, we'll have a closer-
Final statement, none of that? All right. All right, so then we'll move into consideration there. Mr. Urban.
Again, pretty simply, there are seven binding elements proposed to be amended onto, well, I guess the removal of all the other binding elements in Section 1, and then the adoption of the new binding elements, as written in your staff report, with the inclusion of federal in item number 4. Federal, state, and county ordinances.
Okay. You guys have your marching orders. Any, anyone wish to come forward with a motion? Mr. McWilliams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question first, if I may, from Mr. Urban. As part of this motion, do we need to state that the original binding elements are removed?
That's what I was just asking, Mr. Carter. He can explain it.
Okay.
Uh, you can if you want to, but I think if we approve these binding elements, that automatically repeals the others.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. That answered my question. All right. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the proposal for the new binding elements as presented to us today. The reason being that by eliminating the binding elements that were deemed not necessary by the staff or that have been completed since the last time that we had a discussion concerning these binding elements, it certainly makes it easier to deal with and to understand. Also, adding in item number 4, the word "federal," along with the local and state, that Ms. Smith's sharp eye caught. And I don't think I need to say anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Mr. Carter, we have an adequate motion? All right. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Mr. Mesker? All right, and we will move into a roll call vote. Ms. Fox.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. Klingefus?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Haslin?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Very well. PZ-18-004 has been approved by a vote of 13 to 0. All right, we'll move on to the, and this docket is closed. Move on to the next. Ms. Alvey. Oh, Ethel, would you please read the next docket? Thank you.
Docket PZ-18-005. Application has been filed by Skyland Farms Incorporated for the approval of a minor subdivision plat and waiver on approximately 257 acres. The property is located at 8400 Todd's Point Road, Crestwood. The zoning is R2 Residential and CO1 Conservation Residential.
Ms. Alvey, you're making the presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, again, Amy Alvey, Oldham County Planning. This is a request for approval of a minor subdivision plat and waiver for property located at 8400 Todd's Point Road in Crestwood. The property is zoned R2 Residential and CO1 Conservation, and is approximately 257 acres. This is an area view, or, sorry, aerial view of the property. You'll see it's outlined here in red. The parent tract is divided by Oldham and, Oldham County and Shelby County. And Oldham County, they have approximately 185 acres, and in Shelby County, approximately 72 acres. So our GIS only will outline properties here in Oldham County. So the entire tract, you will see, is encompassed there. So highlighted there, shaded in blue, that is the property that is located in Shelby County. And then the property in red is in Oldham County, just for clarification. According to the definition of Section 2.2 of the subdivision regulations, a minor subdivision is a subdivision of land into not more than three lots within a five-year time period and not involving a new public street or private road. The definition of a major subdivision is a subdivision of land into four or more lots or any subdivision involving a new public street or private road. Also, any division of land beyond three lots within a five-year time period from a parent tract or tract divided therefrom. So what the applicant is requesting to do is to ask for a waiver of the minor plat rule to allow one additional lot to be created. So they are proposing to create four tracts of land from this one parent parcel. As you can see, the smallest tract is 20 acres, with the largest being 108. So this is the minor plat that was submitted with the application. So you can see the four proposed tracts there. This is at the entrance road into 8400 Todd's Point Road. This is the east view. This is the north view, which is across the street, which this is 1818. This is the west view. This, again, is the entrance into the property 8400 Todd's Point. This is the north adjoining property across the street, as well as this one. And then this is the east adjoining property, which is, you can see from your little area map, that's the little part that had already previously been cut out years ago. And then this is the view from Todd's Point Road, looking from the east to west. Just, as you can see, they are all open fields along Todd's Point Road. So in summary, the applicant is requesting a waiver of Section 2.2 of the subdivision regulations regarding minor subdivisions to allow four divisions within five years and approval of the minor plat as submitted.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alvey. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Alvey? All right, we'll move on to the, yes, Mr. Douglas. We're gonna bend the rules a little bit, but yes. For staff, okay?
For staff.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
So why are we doing a waiver for the, from three lots to four lots on a minor?
They can ask for a waiver of a subdivision regulation. You've seen those in the past where they, they're not creating a new road. All of these lots will have access onto a public right-of-way. There's no need for variances. So they can ask for a waiver of that regulation to create one additional lot. Or if, say, they wanted to have two additional lots, they can ask for a waiver of that, and it's under the purview of the Planning Commission whether or not they want to grant that waiver of the regulation to allow that additional creation.
Just to repeat what she said, the key here is that there's not a creation of any new roads or right-of-way, so. So basically, they're just, for those extra tracts that they're asking for, they're just going to be, is what you're told, driveways put in to Todd's Point Road?
You can ask the applicant how they're gonna access each individual lot, but they have adequate road frontage to meet the standards under the zoning regulations.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
All right. Anyone else? Mr. McWilliams.
Ms. Amy. Yes, sir. If they had a, if I understand it correct, minor subdivision plat up to three. More than three, a major subdivision.
Correct.
Okay, so if the waiver were denied, then they would be required to come back with a major subdivision plat or not. The minor would no longer be applicable.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Bonet?
So if one of the reasons for doing this is because they need access to the lot that exists in Shelby County, does that not make the road, they're gonna be utilizing a private road versus a driveway if it's accessing two properties?
It's not acce, it's only accessing one. It's just divided between Oldham and Shelby County. But you may ask the applicant for clarification of how, what their road network is gonna be and how they're gonna access the lots.
Let me rephrase. If a driveway is constructed that accesses two separate properties, does that then make it a private road, or is it?
No, it would be an access easement.
Okay.
And that's one big lot, remember. It's 108 acres, tract 1, and that includes the portion that's in Shelby County.
Okay.
Correct. It's not two separate tracts. It's just divided through a property, through a county line.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
They use that as justification. They can't get to the piece that's in Shelby County because of, because of the creek, but it's included in tract 1.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bonet, are you? Okay, Mr. Douglas.
I, I guess now that clears up something for me, but for the Shelby County tract, so are we including? Because we can't make a decision on Shelby County side on, on including that tract into this. Well, they're not subdividing the Shelby County portion. So if they were, if they were taking the property that's in Shelby County, they would have to go to Shelby County for it. It's included in the tract. So the 108.34 acres is including the Shelby County tract?
Correct. And they'll have to record a minor plat in Shelby County to reflect the property line shift, creating that lot. Because it crosses county lines. So we have that here, where if someone creates a lot, that, that plat is required to be recorded in Oldham County and Henry County, or Oldham County and Shelby County. So it's on record, and so each zoning department has to make sure that it's correct and meets their regs and all of that stuff.
So, well, I'll just end it there.
All right. Any additional questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Alvey. We'll move on to application from the applicant. Presentation from the Afghanskis. Mr. Rowland.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Ray Rowland. I represent the applicant, Skylands Farm, Inc. My office is located in Crestwood at 6506 West Highway 22. And today, probably- And today, probably Neil Roberts, who did the survey on this property, will be giving you most of the information. And then, we have Pam Carrico, who is Vice President of Skyland... Where'd you go, Pam? Skyland Farm, Inc. And then, Mr. Willard, who is with the real estate brokerage that is marketing the property for them.
Mr. Rowland, may I interrupt? If we can, we'll go ahead and get anyone who's going to provide testimony sworn in at this point.
And they may, as far as answering questions, so that would be fine.
Let's go ahead and get them sworn. Please stand.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I think everybody is familiar with the location of this property, the Wakefield Farm or Farms, right across the street from this at the corner of Mount Zion and I guess where Old Floyd'sburg turns into Todd's Point Road. In order to justify a waiver, there is supposed to be a unique situation. And we have it with this property in that we're talking about two hundred and fifty-seven acres plus of acreage and a request to allow the division of four... Of this land into four parcels, one of which was a standalone parcel that was completely within the boundaries of Shelby County. And that's the one designated in yellow as a hundred and eight acres. And that is being joined with other land and therefore will give it access to the highway. And the exact location of that access would be determined by the other government agency, the Department of Transportation. This property was the Ott Family Farm. And since Ms. Ott passed away some twenty years ago, has been on and off and on and off the market. And basically, it is not being regularly farmed. There have been some crops that have been raised on the property, but there's approximately seventy acres of cropland involved with this. A lot of the rest of this property is in the floodplain. A lot is treed and wooded. And the division of this property, after consultation with Mr. Roberts and with the real estate people, was determined to be the best possible way to include all two hundred and fifty-seven acres, which would, in fact, make this marketable for them after twenty years. And would not be considered, in my mind, maybe technically by the black and white letter of the rules of the ordinance, is a major subdivision development. But basically, I would assert that the intent of that rule was for application to a much smaller tract than two hundred and fifty-seven acres. The smallest that is being proposed is twenty, and it goes to a hundred and eight. So, this is not your typical situation that you would find in determining whether or not a waiver was appropriate or not. This is unique because of the size of the property and because of the size of the division of this property. We have two major tributaries, Curry's Fork and Floyd's Fork, that merge here in this property. So, naturally, a lot of this property is going to be in the floodplain. And it appears that this type of division, at least at this point in time, with what's around this property would be much better suited than single-family residences, development with or without sewers. This property is just being proposed to be divided into four tracts. Neil Roberts is going to tell you more about this and I guess the whys for the division as it is being shown to you today. And then Pam Carrico is here to answer any questions. And Mr. Willard is also here to answer any questions in regard to the marketing of the property, if anybody has a question in reference to that. We feel our request is appropriate. We feel our request is very reasonable. There's not going to be any noticeable difference in what you see as you drive down this road. There are already, what, three residences on this property existing. And there probably would be one residence per track that does not have a residence already on it that would be added. So, with that said, Mr. Roberts, would you explain subdivision?
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Neil Roberts. I'm a registered land surveyor. My office is at forty-three sixteen La Grange Road, Shelbyville, Kentucky. And I'm here to, on behalf of Skyland Farms and Ms. Carrico, to answer any questions that you have and ask that you grant this waiver to us. One of the reasonings for our looking at this and this situation, we had the tract that was over in Shelby County, and there was no access to that tract other than coming through this farm to get to it. So, in meeting with the water company, Mr. Rose, we determined that we want... To avoid running any additional water line, that we would take the tract in Shelby County, incorporate that with some property that's in Oldham County that encompasses track one, and run that up to the corner of Mount Zion Road, where we would have access to water. So, basically, what we had was, we had a standalone tract already in Shelby County that we had no access to from, through Persimmon Ridge. So, in order to access this property, we had one of two options. That was either to do an easement from Todd's Point Road back to this property or include this piece of property into another piece of property that was in Shelby County. I'm sorry, in Oldham County. So, by doing so, we created the extra tract that we're asking for, basically asking for the waiver for.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's... It's pretty simple.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Rowland. Anything additional? Okay. Is anyone else here present wishing to provide testimony in support of the application? I'd seen none. Anyone here wishing to provide testimony in opposition to this application? Seeing none. All right, questions from the commission? Oh, please, I'm sorry, I missed you. Please come forward.
Not opposition, but just questions.
Please, hmm, questions and...
Yeah, I own one of the pieces of property to the south.
We're gonna need to get... We're gonna need to get you sworn. We'll get your name and address.
Mike Gross.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name?
Mike Gross.
And your address, please.
One fifty-one Persimmon Ridge Drive.
Thank you, please proceed.
So, there are... I own one of the pieces of property to the south, along with three other homeowners and Persimmon Ridge Golf Course and wastewater management. Just a couple of questions about the zoning. Are the two pieces... Is the seventy-two acres zoned differently as conservation than the one on Todd's Point?
I can answer that.
Mr. Roberts, if you would, please, thank you.
Sure. Shelby County zoning is a little different than Oldham County zoning. Shelby County, the seventy acres, the seventy-some-odd acres that's in Shelby County is just zoned agriculture. And the property that's in Oldham County is zoned both... The front part of it is zoned R2, and the rear part of it is zoned conservation.
Okay. Do those... Will those maintain the same zoning?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think at one time, they had cows crossing. They had a bridge.
Right, there was a bridge at one time.
Okay. And will that change their ability... Will any of this change their ability to do any logging or grazing or hunting on these properties?
Whatever falls underneath the current zoning of the particular county, it would be allowed under that zoning. I'm not exactly sure if logging is one of those things that is allowed under agriculture in Shelby County without getting a conditional use. It may or may not be. I cannot answer that question right now.
Some of the hardship... The exceptional hardship waiver is asking for access. Does that mean through track one across Floyd's Fork or track two?
No, through track one across Floyd's Fork.
Okay. And does this further or change their ability to further subdivide into minor plats? Or would that just be a whole new option for the tract owner?
Well, certainly, that anything that was done after this... After this would have to be come back before this board or Shelby County to be approved.
Thank you. Some more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Anyone else? All right, we will move into questions from the commission. Anyone from the commission with questions for the applicant or for Mr. Gross? Mr. McWilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure to whom I need to address this question, so whomever. Mr. Rowland? There's a hand up back there. I don't know what that means.
Please, please approach so we can hear you. Give me one minute, Mr. Rowland.
Hi, I'm Desi Jackson, and I live along the creek. And I just have a question about where will that...
One second. We're gonna need to get your address, and then we'll get you sworn in, okay?
Five-five-zero-seven Pierce Way.
Thank you.
Crestwood.
I'm sorry, five-five-zero-seven what?
Pierce Way.
And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just curious. You're talking about this access road going across the creek. Where would that be on track one?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the only place that we could cross the creek would be up there where that comes together.
That is a touchscreen. If you wouldn't mind placing a finger on the screen and providing an indicator.
Right in this area, right here, right... Let's see.
Or right corner, we'll erase it.
Okay. Oh, okay, I got you.
Can I do this?
Yes.
Thank you, Amy.
Does this make a circle? Amy, can I make a circle? Okay. This area right here is the only place that the part in Shelby County and Oldham County touch each other. So, that would be the only place to have access for these people to cross, whoever purchases tract to cross back and forth across the creek, whatever they deem. I believe at one time, there was a way that you could actually ford the creek right there. So, that might be what they do. So, whatever they do in that area, certainly, that would have to be right there. There's actually not an access road. We're not building any roads. It's just that the... We added some property that's in Oldham County to a piece of property that we had in Shelby County that was kind of isolated by the creek.
Right. Where... Is this for a residence? Or is this for a future subdivision? I'm just about for this tract. I'm just... I don't understand.
Our intent here today is for a single residence. Certainly, if there was any future development, it would have to come back before this commission.
Okay. So, this would be sold as a... As one tract, one residence, and they need a little... And a way to get their driveway?
Well, if they...
Get their property.
Yeah, well, if they build the house... I feel like they would probably build the house closer to the road. I don't know that. I mean, they obviously could build anywhere on there they wanted to, but they wouldn't have to be able to get back and forth across the creek.
To Todd's Point Road?
To Todd's Point Road, yes. There's no access to any other road, nor would there be at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Any further questions from those in attendance? All right, we will move into questions from the commission. Mr. McWilliams, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a couple. Persimmon Ridge is on sewers?
Yes.
So, I'm going to make the assumption that this tract that is in Shelby County... Excuse me, which is adjacent to Persimmon Ridge and also track two, which has frontage adjacent to Persimmon Ridge in Shelby County. There could be sewers.
I think I can address that, but mine will be just an assumption also. It's my understanding with speaking with, I think it's Ms. Jost, that's the owner of the Persimmon Ridge Golf Course and did the development, that is a private sewer system they have within the... With the compounds of their subdivision. So, that other than, unless they would agree to it, there would be no way to hook onto it.
But it's possible.
I'm assuming, yeah, it would be possible if there was some sort of agreement that was made in the future or I'm sure monetary transfer also.
Now, okay, thank you. Somebody smarter than me, Mr. Rowland, needs to help me with this. Let's just make another assumption. Let's make the assumption that the privately-owned sewer plant has capacity or has the ability to develop capacity to add a significant number of homes. And let's just say that track two would have sewers. And then, we have track one that's adjacent to two. We have three that's adjacent to two. I guess at some point, they could have sewers. And then, we have track four, which would be adjacent to three. At some point, they could have sewers. And I realize, Ray, I'm talking hypothetical, but I just want all the cards on the table for everybody that's here.
Mr. Rowland, before you respond, can we get Mr. Roberts to give us an indication of where the floodplains are on this property?
Thank you. That'll make a difference in whether or not they can even add lots, yeah.
I'm gonna just... Probably do the best I can. Probably something like that right there.
All right, thank you. Mr. McWilliams, can...
Help me understand what... Exactly what that means.
Well, basically, a good portion of the property is in the floodplain. It's bottom land that's adjacent to both Floyd's Fork and Curry's Fork.
Which means no sewers?
Well, I can't really say it means no sewers, but I know that from the conversation that I had with Ms. Jost that there will absolutely be no connection to their sewers ever, in her words. And I'm... That's a... I'm phrasing her. But their sewer... Their treatment plant is actually in the bottom of track three there, about where it says curve table, right in this area here is where their treatment plant is. And that is in the floodplain where there is that.
Okay, so I... So, there could be sewers. Okay, so I, so there could be sewers.
Well, let me, let me, this is sort of testimony, but as staff, to help you give it some clarity, if you're gonna build in a floodplain, you have to elevate your structure two feet above the base flood elevation, and we're currently working down on the Ohio River to try to get houses either removed from the floodplain or elevated. So, one of the key components of developing here would be to not be in the floodplain, simply because every time the water comes up and Curry's Fork drains a large, large area, you don't want to be there when the water comes up. So, we probably would have difficulty even issuing building permits in the floodplain.
Do we, do we have other homes that are in floodplains in Oldham County?
Well, again, on the Ohio River, we do.
Besides the Ohio River, I mean, I understand that completely.
Typically, and in subdivision developments, we make sure they're not. We require that they show the 100-year floodplain and the building, like Spring Hill Trace is an example, all the houses are out of the floodplain.
Okay. So, we would, we have historically not agreed to a building permit if it is in the floodplain?
That's, we, we try to discourage it, yes, simply because of having to elevate the structure and then the implications of living.
But if I was just a really hard button, I wanted my house in the floodplain, I could get it.
I suppose you could, yeah.
Cost factor, yes.
Yes, all right. Well, and, you know, and the reason I'm going there, and once again, it's hypothetical, if, if there were, down the road somewhere, sewers in this area, that changes the whole complexion of development, as you know. And in Oldham County, where we, we don't have sewers, we've got, you know, one acre minimums and other things. So, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about infrastructure and other things down the road, and maybe if someone can, Pam, can talk to me about how this is gonna develop or what the plans are right now, it would be helpful.
Left you off the hook, Mr. Rowland.
Hi, I'm Pam Carrico. I'm one of the owners, and, so, Mr. McWilliams?
Yeah.
I can't say down the road what it's gonna do. I've lived there for 42 years, no, 47 years. Been married 42 years and lived there. So, I'd probably be the first one standing here arguing, I don't want a subdivision, okay, on this property. So, this is how we felt that we could do this and sell it.
All right, so, in, in the tracks, for what it's worth, I mean, like you said, you don't know.
No, nobody would know that.
Nobody else, no. But that's not in the master plan, but, but it could be, that's all I'm saying.
It could be.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mr. McWilliams, there's nothing hidden here at all. There's no contracts, short-term plans, long-term plans, anything like that as far as further subdivision of the property. It's just that it made sense to do this into four very large tracks. It does make it more marketable for, for them, and the opportunity has been there for developers, you know, in the past 20 years since this property has been on the market. Nobody has, you know, taken that bait and run with it at all, and it's not expected. So, you know, the transparency is that there is nothing on the table in regard to short-range or long-range plans as far as further development would be concerned for this property.
Don't think for a minute you're hiding anything, Mr. Rowland.
I know, I know.
Mr. Urban, they would need to come back to us anyway if there were any changes beyond what we're dealing with today, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Any, we always have a binding element that says that no further subdivision of the property without coming back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Any type of development at all.
Can I add something to that, Mr. Williams?
Yes, sir.
One of the main reasons that we did this into four tracks like we have done here is because we do not have ample water service from Oldham County Water to divide it into any further tracks at this point. I've met a number of times with Mr. Rose. He informed me that there's a six-inch line across the street and that if any more lots than these four lots would be put on this, this particular development, we would have to run about 20,000 feet of 12-inch water line to serve, serve that property. So, I think that's probably one of the main things that has, in the past, caused the bigger developers to come in and to, to turn away from this project.
I suspect. Thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Wheeler, did you have something additional?
Yes, I could. I'm Jimmy Wheeler with H. Berry Smith Company out of Shelbyville, Kentucky. And strictly as a marketing standpoint, for instance, Track 1, we moved that line on up towards Mount Zion, not only for the water, but so that would give a building site up out of the floodplain. So, someone could build there, and then the 70 acres that adjoins that, as far as we're concerned, that's just strictly gonna be for their recreational use. They'll have to manage a way to cross the creek and get to it. We have had some interest in these tracks as they are. We have had some interest in someone coming in and maybe, say, for instance, Track 3 interested, and maybe if they could buy that and divide that into two tracks. Not anything, not a major subdivision-type deal, but we haven't proceeded with that. But we did have some interest, people not in the whole thing, but as the smaller tracks, the way we have them designed now, that we do have some interest in those. And as far as I know, those people are just buying as individuals for the individual tracks. As I say, we have had some interest just in post-plat that maybe someone might be interested in dividing into another track. But as you know, that would be something down the road for someone else. But we intended for these to be four individual tracks, simply to be able to market the property better.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything additional?
All right, not at the moment.
Anyone else? Mr. Douglas, please.
I think we just heard the potential of Track 3 gonna be subdivided again. So, are we actually extending it to, from a minor to a major subdivision? I know what's on the agenda here is just these four tracks, but we just heard that there was an interest in testimony that Track 3 is gonna be subdivided again. So, I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, there, my understanding is there is not a contract on any of these lots.
I understand that.
But the, again, typically, we say if it's to be further subdivided, it would have to come back. One of the key issues here is that the Oldham County Water District, and you heard testimony, there's not ample water supply. A key part, component of that is there's not enough water supply for fire protection. So, the situation with this large tract of land that they've had, again, we've heard testimony on the market, off the market several times, is that it's not a good piece of ground to be developed into more dense development, especially because I don't think that sewers necessarily would be available to the Oldham County section. But, so, large tracks are, again, typically what you would see in a track like this that has floodplain, limited resources in terms of infrastructure. And so, even if the Track 3 potentially wanted to be further divided in a, in a second, they don't have a contract right now. We've had contact with a person that's interested, just inquiring. But again, it would still be large tracks. Even if it was divided into two, it, it would still be significant parcels. So, it's not the density we normally see in a, in a real big subdivision plan, and that's why as staff, we felt that going through the minor plat with a waiver was the right way to go rather than an unknown even in further subdivision of a tract. But all of it would come back here for your consideration, should you choose to go ahead and approve the waiver and allow this to happen.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? All right, anyone else questions? Mr. Finney?
Ms. Carrico, I just have a quick question. How many, the Otte family, how many members are part of the Skyland Farm Incorporated?
Um, I have to count. I think there's just, three. Six.
Six, okay. And this is just basically a measure to be able to dissolve the property for the, for the corporation? This is not looking for a future corporation subdivision, Skyland Farms?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Mr. Finney? Anyone else questions? All right. We'll move into rebuttal evidence, cross-examined by the applicant. Mr. Rowland?
I don't have any rebuttal evidence.
Okay.
We just think that this is a proper request for this property. I think as has been noted here today, this morning, there's no future plans, Mr. Douglas. I think if I was going to buy property, I would have that question in the back of my mind. You know, what could I do with it down the road if I didn't want to treat it as a 66-acre tract? And we're being very honest, you know, with coming for it. People have asked that, yes. But there is no contract in place, there's no intention. Ms. Carrico doesn't want further development. And by the way, she lives right in the middle of this. That white space between the green and the pink is Pam's farm. So, we hope that you will agree that a variation can and should be granted for this request, and we ask that you do that.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. Mr. Gross, Ms. Jackson, anything to add? Rebuttal or questions? Very well, all right. Mr. Rowland, I am going to assume that those last words were also what constituted your final statement?
You have assumed correctly, thank you.
Very well, thank you. All right, Mr. Urban?
Well, I, I do wanna add one thing that is important for your consideration. They could create three tracks today under a minor plat and not actually be in front of you. The fourth track is just, again, asking for that waiver. If somebody buys one of these tracks and they wanted to divide it in two, they could do it by the minor plat. I think, you know, that's a fairly simple process normally, after five years, correct? After five years. So, we do have a minor plat process, and, you know, again, we as staff felt that this was a reasonable application simply because it allowed the division of the tracks so they could sell them separately today. So, your consideration is a motion or to approve or deny the waiver creating four tracks and therefore waiving the requirement that not more than three tracks be created in a minor plat?
All right, guys, we have our marching orders. Does anyone wish to put a motion on the table? Ms. Bonet?
I move that we approve Dock at PZ 18005 for a waiver to the minor subdivision plat regulation limiting it to three additional tracks and allowing four. I feel it complies with multiple objectives of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations. I also feel that this does satisfy the intent of the minor plat. It's not a major subdivision. It's the most appropriate use of the land and will improve the marketability and the usage of the property.
Thank you, Ms. Bonet. Mr. Carter?
I just have one question. Are we approving the plat too? Subdivision plat?
Um, by approving the waiver, we had a review process that we go through where we send it out to the agencies, and Amy, I think...
So, well, what I'm getting at, I think the commission needs to know if you approve the waiver and don't approve the plat, theoretically, they could change the plat.
Correct, right. So, yeah, it would be a good idea to consider...
The plat as presented.
Yes.
I think we need to do that.
Should that be two separate motions or...
We have not picked up a second yet, so you have the opportunity to modify.
Can I roll it into one motion, to approve the waiver and the plat presented today?
Yes.
I choose to do so.
Plat as presented today.
The plat as presented today, including the waiver to the minor plat regulations.
Waiver, what, well, if you approve the plat, you have actually waived the three-lot requirement, so...
I would like to acknowledge that we do realize it doesn't fit into the normal restrictions of a minor plat.
All right, do we have an adequate motion, Mr. Carter? Very well.
Second, Mr. Chairman?
We have a motion and a second. All right. Do we need to do discussion on this?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion before we move to vote?
We didn't propose any?
Normally, I would say for the plan that is submitted as today, but as Ms. Bonet had in her motion, it's for the plat as submitted, so it's kinda included in her motion as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alvey. We'll move into a roll call vote then. Ms. Fox?
Mr. Horton? Mr. Hathling?
Yes.
Mr. Falvey?
Yes.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Klingofus?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Very well, the Dock at PZ 18-005 has passed on a vote of 12 to 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take a 10-minute recess and we'll start the next dock. Oh, here, before I keep that. Oh, do I need to sign these?